Hello everyone, welcome to the I S E English class and this is the target S S C C H S L C G L English session five. This session low very important model paper okay discuss at the same time in this session in this particular paper we have wonderful questions. And the pretty question in chicken or a man over topic need revise share school opportunity. So from every question we are getting a wonderful opportunity to revise the topic and also I will try to add as much information as possible to each and every topic. So let's check on the start at the let's have the first question right so select the most appropriate option to filling the blank. It's a direct question each other my this question is filling the blank okay sir manam question to the careful guy let's try to understand what is the question given here. So she returned the book after she dash it. She returned the book after she dash it. She reads read had read was read and each other. So what is the meaning of this sentence okay it the catch it anger man I got them I endi. One thing is for sure this is a question which is based on the topic tenses. Kada ma e question base you know topic anything to manaki tenses. This is a question which is directly from the topic tenses. So tenses and a topic in chief base I you know question iti. She returned the book after she dash it. And they tanu book chadvesin tarvata return chase Saru. My dear friends make tells Kada. Tenses low mano eprenakuda e parichesin tarvata apani jargindi. Let the epani chase a mondo apani chase Sanu and they. When we talk about two actions that completed in the past. Gatham low rondo pondu puurtai poti. When you do one action first another action second. Apuru a action iti starting loane chestamo and they. The action that takes place first should always be in past perfect. Then okay sir mali chaptanu. Eprenama nam gatham low and the past tense low rondo actions cani puurti chesti. Yeah action item mundo chestamo and the first chestamo. Danny chapdani ke manam use says a tense past perfect. My dear friends past perfect and tepru kuda had any the untanani manan tenses lone avishani nechukuntamu. I talk sir chewdam she returned the book after she dash it and now. Tanu chadresin tarvata bookani itchesaru and they. First chadvisaru kabati yeah actually it the first day complete I indho. At the past perfect la undal kabati the answer is the third option had read. So e question dwaramanam tenses nokusari revise chessko den jargindi mukhenga. We have got the chance to revise what past perfect is about. Second question give a lemon okay sorry mali chaptanu. Tenses low okay important tense into nama dan peru past profit. And the woman A N H Kuntama and they ronda actions complete I and tellsnapuru. First jargipoyina action manam past perfect lo mention just some when two actions are over in the past the first action must be in past perfect. But past perfect and the had compulsory undali and the go option C is the right answer. I hope everybody understood it clearly. If you manam second question Loki well damu. Sentence improvement and are even narrow sentence improvement and a good sentence it's your under local part of the sentence underline chaser. Unless underline chaser. Avasarama iti improve Jamanar chewdama. We must start now unless it will be too late. And they itu wanti questions epri it the unless laanti word or until but laanti options itcharo. Me andarki tell yaali ye topic nichi ochina question iti. This is a question from the topic conjunction. Manaki grammar no topics untaka kada mo. Tenses direct indirect speech conditionals prepositions articles conquered adjective conjunctions. Ela manaki topics untaka. This this is a question directly from conjunctions. So conjunction a topic lechero we must start now dash it will be too late. Eppudu gutpet koni conjunction in Japan a question ochinapuru. You can't go for a direct guess. The answer is based on the meaning of the sentence. Sentence okam meaning miday answer adharapadi undi. Meaning entasalu. Mani prustata valley lack upote chala late ipotundi. So lack upote anna meaning kada kavali. But lack upote and they emothundi conjunction or. Sir or and the lack upote kada but unless and the entity. The meaning of the word unless is it take oni antam unless and the it take oni antamo. But and take oni antamo until and the appari da kaantamo. So mere conjunctions and a topic niche kunte. In conjunctions we discuss wonderful rules. We have three types of conjunctions coordinating conjunction subordinating conjunction correlative conjunction. Ela manaki beautiful types untai. And the low okokka conjunction yella use she yali yella use she kudo manam discuss chestkuntamo. Anyway this is a beautiful question we must start now or it will be too late. If present startable lack upote late outun. Lack upote annam kabati or any the manu kada use chestamo. Chalo now idioms enti anadi ger my dear friends idioms key nizan chappal and the syllabus undu because idioms is a part of vocabulary challenging. No doubt no doubt that idioms is a challenging aspect because we have thousands of idioms. Mariyala ye idioma naadagachu. Me amu lectures main just some and they repeated guard who turn idioms we. Me ku epri koda important idioms laga chipta undamu. Kani ave vasta any ever chapleru. So idioms kis syllabus undu kabati you have to be more responsible. And they in chial sir. For example mirko exam ko one month time undi S S E exam ki meka one month time undi. And thirty days undi. Per day at least try to study twenty idioms. Apuru six hundred idioms farm chadukun exam ki vellali that will definitely help us. Chewdama answer mari. So let bygones be bygones. Let bygones be bygones and idioms ki meaning ento chaptano. Okay sir meru third option choorandi. Okay sir meru fourth option choorandi fourth option even our ante to forgive and forget and our my dear friends. So let bygones be bygone and they intenti. Gatan ni machupo toppu niksham inchii mundu kikonosagu. So forgive shaminchi forget machupo. And they either jargindi past low gatham low something happen something happened in the past. And now the meaning of the word let bygones you know let bygones be bygones and they. Leave it don't ponder over it don't keep on badgering on that don't think about it anymore. Udlai antam mekoka idioms chaptanu dinki kunshum degiriga untu chapmentara. Burry the hatchet there is a beautiful idiom call burry the hatchet. Burry the hatchet and idioms dinaki chala degiriga untundi. Burry the hatchet and the kuda forget the past anna meaning osundi. Okay next one. The passengers were afraid but the captain dashed them that there was no danger. So what is the meaning of the sentence passengers were afraid passengers by paddaru. Past tense low and chusara. Past tense low the passengers were afraid. Kani epri the but and or my dear friends always remember always remember but is a contrary conjunction and a me wantamo. But is a contrary conjunction and they but tuna yes sentence loane na two parts of the sentence two clauses opposite la undai. And they akada answer ochesin manaki. We'll by paddaru kani and epri ta annamo akada by paddan ki opposite edo kete undali by paddan ki opposite entity dhairam. Kabati dhairan ki answer ekkundhi assured. Neena slah question completed a chadavledu options kuda choledu. Neeno but and a conjunction health these kunnanu. Hope you got the point. You procs are chewdama mali. The passengers were afraid but the captain assured them that there was no danger. Yes dhairan nature assurance and itcharu barosa ni icharu antamo. Okay so remaining options and me manaki tellsinve unai caution and the jagrata chapadam caution and the you know warning laanti di. My dear friends caution and the me andarki tellsu caution and the warning laanti di. Then we have claim claim and orakna chappal and they claim chedam antamo. Generalga claim and evadikrundo adhalu vastai. Okay it is nadie any chapadam demand chedam laanti meaning osundi. Inkokati yavranachani poti you know yavranachani poti kuda akada claims antamo. And then the fourth option is confined confined and they limited antamo restricted and a koda antam restricted and they. Orakka chappal and they swatcha no harin chedam antamo telugulo. Swatcha no harin chedam it means limit chedam sankhelu vedam not exactly the physical shackles but I'm confined to this room. Any pidi room lo bandiga unanand chappalan koni I'm confined to this room. So that is the meaning of confined but anyway the answer is assured barosa ichar passengers by paddaru kani captain valander ki by padadani barosa icharu. Let's have a look at the next question spotting the error adiaru. My dear friends epri koda gutpet koni manu spotting the errors chesetapuru. Catch it anga error reckon in chosundi. Manam nechkuna topics in charaval I always say this whenever we do spotting the errors. Every question which is having some error must come from one of the topics of the grammar. Be tenses direct indirect conditionals conquered proposition conjunction article whatever. Every topic I repeat every topic in English grammar will have some rules. Then and the can't and chalamanda do tar sir spotting the errors ela chayali. Tanu kate solution rules bhaaga nech koli that's all. Okay na chewdama. She loved herself so more that. Nizan chappal and the question ending daka chadavall sound samledu because she loved herself she loved herself so more that antama so much antama. Inka chappal and me andarki koda question chaptanu. English language loss lo manaki so more and a expression a undadu kada. Manaki English language so more and a expression a undadu kada. Manaki untake evalam so much untu ndu kani so more and a expression doesn't work. Hope you got the point so now part C is the error. Sir mechepar kada prati question low error edo koka topic nichi ohsundi ani. This is which topic which topic does this question belong to. Me andarki tellsu so anedi conjunction kabati mere conjunctions topic and coach leda. Ekadnu compare jeshno kabati degrees of comparison and a koda meru and coach. I hope the point is clear I'll repeat this statement now. She loved herself so much that she loved herself so much that. Okay next. Now we have another beautiful question is filling the blank. The frightened convict dash for mercy convict and the narrow stoodu antamu kadandi. Convict and the narrow stoodu one who made a mistake. So frightened by him by padipotuna frightened and the by him low na. So the frightened convict dash for mercy. Me re chappandi. By him by him low na narrow stoodu dash for mercy mercy chubinchmani bedrishtada. Mercy chubitchmani demand chestada mercy chubitchmani chaptada kado mercy chubitchmani. Pradhaya padthadu mercy is differently you know only you can expect mercy when you request for that naturally kada. So pradhaya paddan ki par options eunai chewdama. Mercy chubitchmani arustada shout chestada whisper and the number ga matladada chevlo chaptada kado. Mumbled and they. Ardhamparadham lakuna matladastada mumbled and the name antamante talking in a very unclear way and a my dear friends. Mumbling and the talking in a very unclear way mumbling and the talking in a very unclear way vague and a koda antamo. Avtarvala e maadtar man kardankakapote. Danny chapdang man even to and a mum don't mumble antam. Sisarigga matladu cleariga matladu confusediga matladu kuantan kada. Danne manam. You don't mumble my dear friend especially when you attend some interviews. Where the interviews get attend Ite talk very clearly don't mumble antaru. So ave me kada ma. Pradhaya padthadu pradhaya padani plead and a plea and the request ama. So yanta easy ga undu kada e question okay. Chalo let's have a look at the next question. Now mali idiya madigera nindaka chappanu mali mali guttchessnanu because I have to repeat it idioms. Meru eval nichi kanisam per day ok fifteen twenty idioms ok target ga pettukuri. Nech koli lack poti idioms tegranaosanga manaki marks lose avals osundi. What is the idiom to lead by the nose my dear friends to lead by the nose. Me rok question chappandi maximum idioms manam guess chaykodu chayale mu koda. Chegaligra chaykodu du kani e particular idiom kontavarku manam guess chase because to lead by the nose and the terrible emantam billsa. Mukku patkoda mantam ekra mukku patkoda mantaindanty. I'll give you one example. Ah my boss chara strictiga untaru bark vision la compromise avru. Mukku patkuni panjaisaru antam. My father nanu chinappuru mukku patkuni homework change varu antam and take a meaning entanty. To lead by the nose and they you are taking you know you are taking the other man you are taking into control. You know it's like showing power or domination avanne osai. So options choose evente naadhamai paini manki to depend a yavramideena kuda depend avadama kada ma. Yavane na baddana ikku pani chibadi battedama kado. To completely control someone yes. Avtarvala na puutika manam control chedamo antamo. Chusara so to lead by the nose means you're controlling someone okay. If you meri compulsory ga guttupet koli study ches koli. Chalo next one so select the word which means the same and they. We trima na e mantamante one word substitutes antam. All these kinds of things you know this kind of questions we call them one word substitutes. Me andarki tellsu vocabulary low idioms phrases one word substitutes synonyms and antonyms. So chewdama person with no fixed a board and nano. Asli aboard and the entity aboard and the okstanam okstavaram ok house ok place. So person with no fixed a board means there is a man who has no permanent house to stay. He has no proper residence to live in. So ok place and to ledu and that truth untadu. Ok rose ok urla unti inkoroz inkokurla inkakada untadu. He keeps traveling from place to place without having a proper you know a residence of his own. Atu and the vala e mantamante my dear friends. Okay options chewdama artist ate kada kada. Crusader and the tellsa my dear friends meku. Crusader and the end and supporter amma fighter antamo. Okay yo dudeu antam lapote supporter and a koda antam crusader and the emantamante supporter antam. Supporter and a manam partisan and a koda antam support and a manavantamu partisan and a koda antamo. Ita ite kado. Eppu fourth option tourist tourist ki illa lacka boode benti. Tourist and the of course place place ki travel chestadu karatragantok illu untu ndu kada tourist ate kada kada. So naturally the answer is nomad. Neena kapa point chaptan I'll tell you something e question low if you do not know what nomad is even then you can answer this question because you know the meanings of other words. Okay so son ok chota undakonda ok ok own place ami idi any lakunda traveling chesto undavali nomad antamo gutupet koni. Chalo next question is my dear friends the name anta manam me andarki bhaaga tellsu. This is what we call close test. Close test chayadan ki paragraph puurtiga chadvi ardham ches kols navasam undadu. Okay ninety nine point nine percent manki close to set up do a sentence but evente option tells potumi chewdama mari. The Harmandir Sahib also known as Darbar Sahib is a Gurudvara dash. Is a Gurudvara dash in the city of Amritsar low. It Darbar Sahib anedi Amritsar low undi any chaptunnamu. So it is anar chewdandi e manar ikada. He is anar he is a Gurudvara dash in the city of. Akada undi akada undi any chapdani e mantam my dear friends he is located antam right. E mantamu he is located that you know Darbar Sahib and a ka I you know a place akadundi I a ka. Ah it is located and the mighta mekva etta doubt osundi. Sir located a yunduk sir locates koda avachu locating avachu locate naalgu okite kada. Undi palana chota undi and the locate take kada. Vani verbal forms a kada and they. Me rok sir observe chenini is on the underlying chesan and take da. He is epri the use chesemo manam passive voice lo chaptunnamu. It is locating any ela antamanda. It is located and the passive voice low na expression a di. Passive voice and they never beppudu koda third form low untundi. Mari next time manar chewdama. Okay alamritsar low untanani chapparu tarvata mari enti. It dash an eminent pilgrimage site. Adi okka prakhyati ganchena okka pilgrimage site. Abre emoth nitantda singular a kada. Pagi devi past tense like valavals sound samledu sentence bottom present tense on a undi choorandi. Sentence like a past tense low ledu. Sentence bottom present tense on the kiko to choorandi. Easy aichar ikada easy aichar and they. The whole sentence is in present tense appu manam buzzki valavals sound samledu. The right answer is it is. So e mana choodandi it is an eminent pilgrimage site imminent and the tellska da. Chala popular antam imminent means very popular and a kada. It is an eminent pilgrimage site dash sikhism akada undi any chaptamo. So akada undi annapuru and the sikhism ki samandinchana annapuru. Dash pilgrimage site of okay na site of and a me wantam friends manam. Site of it is a site on any annam kada. Site by site with site of sikhism. Sikhism ki samandinchana beautiful places avanne kuda and a chaptunnaru. Dash of site of it is usually dash it is usually dash the golden temple in English. Then English low golden temple any pelustaro. But Allah pelustaro any chappal and they options choorandi e unayamanaki. It is named a okala named any anukunti named a answer avadu. Yunduku named avadantara named unto as any undali. But as unda ikada ledu. Known koda avakodu yunduk sir known avakodu dante known unto kuda as undali. As unda ledu regarded koda avakodu regard unto koda as undali. Sir regard pakanas undali consider pakanas undu kudu kani regard pakanas undal kabadi catchitangge dokate answer avutanchusara. Okay next. So it is usually ibra answer amenama it is usually called and time it is usually called the golden temple. Then a golden temple antam. It is usually called the golden temple in English. Dash it is plated with gold then a golden temple any yunduka namo. Gold to dan ki coating undi kabati. Mari dan a golden temple any annamo yundu kante because and then kandandi chala simple kada. Avna kada. It is usually called the golden temple. It is usually called the golden temple in the kante because. Conjunction chusara yavani koda conjunctions because it is plated with gold yundu kante. Because epri chaptam manam we use the word because manam reason chaptunnapuru. Karaman reason chappamo. Then a golden temple and yunduka namo and a gold the coat ayundu kabati. Okay where is the closest where is the closest right chalo let's have a look at the next question. She is an eprenakuda gutpet koni la ochinanti she is an yartha okay na. She is an excellent violinist. She is an excellent violinist dash annaru. E options chusti me kardamayinda this question is based on which concept. We could tenses nechkunapuru okon topic nechkuntaro question tag and a ka topic nechkuntaro. Question tag nizan chappal and they easya kani kona rules ma tra nech koka tapadu. But ikka ritchina question ate ma tra easy ga na icharu. Valen chesare and they ilai icharu mananani decoding chaddamu iladani manam separate garadam. She is an excellent violinist annar. Ikada and undi amucharu is. So question tag lo generalga akaduna verbne manam use chestkuntamo. Me andarki tellsu question tag question positive ga undi tag negative ga undundi. Question negative ga undi tag positive ga undi kabadi simple ga manam. He is cannot pete same otindo mek tellsu isn't any padthamo kabadi the answer is the second option. Okay she is not I mean sorry she is an excellent violinist. She is an excellent violinist isn't she. Avna she is an excellent violinist isn't she right. Kani my dear friends neeni piti chappan kabati pratisari koda ikada helping varbunte. Ade dan manam answer lo raya liar ma tra don't please fix because there are some rules which don't work like this. So you need to be more careful okay na. Sir ala annar kada marabak example ibandi apurmak bhaaga teresundu kada antara definite ga then mekoka example istano. Me re chappandi answer ento chappandi. Then e manan ante she has a car and now e mananu she has a car. Dinaki samandinchana venni chalamanda enjastare and they has kani pichindu kabati answer enjastaru hasn't she any raastaru. Kada kadi nadhe chappanu it is wrong answer ipotundi. Adain sir helping varbundu kada danamir rasher kadaani ma tra confuse avukhodu okay na. Karan sar entanty she has a car answer emothu nante doesn't she antam. E point undu mechepan and they meko tell yaali lacko the question tag pratisari koda. Whatever helping verb you find if you want to copy paste the helping verb no. It works sometimes but it doesn't work sometimes you need to be more careful. If you want to know more about this point and learn question tag rules you have to learn the rules okay na. Sorry we go to the next question anna. Select the word which means the same dini kuda okrakna chappal and the one word substitute. One word substitute and chapter lackote. Dini manam direct vocabulary ga kuda chapachu. Answer e madigero chewdama of prime importance e manaru. Of prime importance and the meaning tellsa of prime importance and they chala important annama. Of prime important and they most important any. But a chino options low most important ki degiriga onna options chewdama mari. Sarkadian what is the meaning of Sarkadian Sarkadian orakka chappanu cyclic antam manam. Cyclical process green chepetapuru Sarkadian antamo. It is wrong mekusar circumference cells kada ala namata circle. Cardinal ordinal and a order antamo or taxonomical order and a vada varusa. Ordinal and a sareena varusalo taxonomical order antamo no. What is primordial my dear friends. Primordial and a chala patha and a pre you know very old and a lacte primitive antamo very at the pre. Very old and a malakpa the primitive and a primordial and a very old and a mo adi koda kado. Me andarki tell yaalsi vishava entanty. Chala important any chepetapuru dan koka vocabulary entanty cardinal antam my dear friends. So cardinal and a something very very important. So if you want to you know if you want to describe something which is very very important. It is chala important man chepetapuru manakada. We use a beautiful vocabulary call cardinal. Cardinal and a chala important and a cardinal and a chala important antamo. So me rok pani chayachu cardinal and they chala important and a word ni meru me running notes low ras kochu. General language of an important ke inkokala koda e mantamante prominent and a kabada. Prominent and the koda idi meaning osundi. Chala normal language of an significant and a koda antam kadandi. Normal language of a normal significant and a. Ledanty vital and a kada. It is vital and a vital and a. Lakpa the pivotel and a word tellsana meku. Pivotel yavani koda beautiful synonyms ama. So cardinal and a something very very important. Important prominent significant vital pivotel. Inka chappanu falkram mani koda antam falkram and a the main point and a falcram and a the central point. Falkram and a the main point and a falkram and a the central point. Illa meru vocabulary ok group ga form ches kodam chala avasaram okay na. Chalo let's go to the next question my dear friends. In the below question some parts of the sentence have errors so find out the part which has an error. Konisalu jagrata chuskondi pratisari yada spotting the error chusramantane error ni vettikadam kakunda. Please make sure you read the instruction. Konisalu valu reverse logo adutarum. Find out the part of the sentence which has no error and a dge chance koda untundi kabadi manam mistake chaykodu. Which part of this sentence has error error ekkundanaru mari chusadama. Daylight creeping in at the small room and for a moment the boy couldn't imagine where he was. And they ento first of all meko meaning explain just Sanu. Ah by room low unnadu slogan suryakantulu you know daylight and the tellarindi kada. Slogan velithuru atari Mohammeda padindi atari melkoch chusadu afar gaya marban galatana ekkunnadu annadu. It anta kuda yendu low undamma past tense low undi kavali and a choorandi. Could could is past tense kada could is past tense was is past tense. And they mekani chusti sentence bottom past tense low and the nizan chappal and they. E question tenses and a topic nichi ochina question ga manau dini chapachu. So this is a direct question my dear friends based on the topic tenses. So e question motta manaki past tense low undi. And the kari. Eppu it the past tense low question anta undo epri the past tense low question anta undo. Mari daylight creeping entama. Aslo pony iti tenses kado anukunnamu forget that the question is not from tenses. Forget that you know the given words would could was yavani odladam. Simple logic chappandi simple question adutan me mali. Creeping anna menti creeping and a I N G form. And they creeping and a danti I N G form kada. I N G for epri na single ga untunda. I N G for ravalant a mundo helping var baido kuddal kada ma. Avna kada ok sentence I N G ravalant a some helping verb should be there kada. I teaching English now anacha I am teaching and taru. She shouting anacha she shouting and tanu they playing anacha. They playing yesterday anacha they were playing yesterday. So verb I N G epdu single ga raadu. Danu mundo helping var barokul undali and they ikada it is wrong. But mane chaddamante yala go sentence past tense low undi kabati manam kuda past tense lo petadama. But creep ki past tense ilsa crept. Creep crept crept creeping antamo verbal forms H koli okay verbal forms study ches koni. Chalo next. The travelers had to wait the travelers had to wait till the fight was over for the three men took all the path with their battle. Indira kuda e manar chewdama. Find out which part of the sentence has the error any adiaru. Find out the error find out chesadama choorandi. The travelers had to wait till the flight was over over the three men. Till the flight was over for the three men took all the path. The three men took all the path with their battle. And they ikada aslu e chappal anukuntamante na na. The three men took all the path with their battle. Ikada the travelers had to wait till the fight was over for the three men took up the path antamo. The three men took up the path. Adari enchukunaru any chappali. Adari enchukunaru and chepetapuru second part la undu kabati. Adari enchukunaru took up the path antam. Took up the part took the pathena annakodu. Took up the path antamo it's a very normal question very easy question. Next mali manu ochi the beautiful model call sentence improvement careful ga vinandi.